Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call the order to Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Call Meeting, Thursday, April the 4th, 2024, 5:00 PM, Board Meeting Room at 39 Bank Street, Chatham, Virginia. Ms. McCluster, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
Mr. Height?
Here.
Mr. Ingram, we have him on the phone.
Mr. Ingram, can you hear us?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'm calling from Mr. Long Hospital in Greensboro, North Carolina.
Thank you.
Okay, we got you. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Whittle?
Here.
Mr. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Dalton?
Here. Moving to item three. Are there any items to be added to the agenda? Not hearing any, we'll move to item four, the approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Tucker?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Dudley. Any further discussion? If none, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Ingram, can I get your vote verbally?
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Height, need to get Mr. Height's?
All right, Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Height?
Yes.
All right, motion carries unanimously. Moving to item five A, the approval of the FY25 School Board Budget. Mr. Terrell? Welcome, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. First of all, I want to say glad to hear that you're on the phone there, Supervisor Ingram. That's very encouraging and hope your recovery is swift. Okay, so before we get started, there's a couple of things I need to address with y'all. All right, tonight, we're going to present the FY24-25 Budget Resolution for Adoption, which includes a tax rate. Now, we reduced the real estate tax rate another three cents from the recommended budget to fifty-six cents per one hundred, based on a board consensus from our last meeting. The latest reduction lowers the tax for an average $200,000 home that had an increase this year with the reassessment, another hundred dollars. So this is a total tax rate reduction of six cents from the current sixty-two cent tax rate to fifty-six cents. Now, the budget that we'll present tonight, the budget resolution, is based on a fifty-six cent real estate tax rate, as I said, as per the consensus from our last meeting, three cents below the recommended rate. Now, staff has looked at the numbers and agrees that we can do all the important things that you want to do now and in the future at this rate in this community. And it's all about what we're doing out there as we build this community. But I must say, so this is important, so please listen carefully to this. Tonight, as part of this resolution, you approve a tax rate. It's important for a number of reasons, the resolution and also for treasury and revenue. So recall that built in, I want to say that we have a fifty-six cent rate now. Recall that built into this fifty-six rate are important items, increased funds for fire rescue trucks and ambulance equipment, EMS and fire equipment, maintenance contracts, training for EMS, more funding for fire EMS volunteers to assist with recruitment, more support for the sheriff and deputies to keep the community safe, more for the schools, so teacher pay is at a level to recruit and retain the best for our kids in the future. Now, this is important. If you choose not to accept that rate, if you go to a fifty-four cent rate, we can approve the school budget tonight, but would need another meeting to reallocate county expenses. We would need another meeting to reallocate county expenses, including the proposed reserve fund for large capital needs such as the jail. If you wish to go farther below to fifty-three cents, we cannot approve the school budget tonight without additional meetings to reallocate funds to meet that. Is that clear? At fifty-six cents, we can do all the things we've discussed for the last three, three, four months, including all these important things I've discussed with fire and rescue, sheriff and the teacher. If you want to go below that, we can approve the school budget, but would need another meeting to reallocate expenses if you choose to go to fifty-four cents. If you want to go to fifty-three cents or below, we cannot approve the school's budget tonight without additional meetings to determine a reallocation of funds. The Bible says, "For each, for which of you intending to build a tower sitteth down, sitteth not down first, and counteth the cost," whether he have sufficient funds to finish it. We have counted the cost and present to you a budget that staff think is the best professional estimate of getting done what you need done in the community now and going forward. I wish to thank the budget team, Ms. Vanderhyde, Mr. Arnold, Mr. Hunt, department heads and constitutional officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Do we need to move to item five B, Mr. Hunt? Okay, all right, we'll move to five B, approval of the FY25 County Budget. Mr. Terrell, do you have anything else to add?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right.
Mr. Chairman.
The floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, being the finance committee chairperson, I want to echo what the county administrator has said. You know, I want to thank Ms. Vanderhyde for doing such a superlative job in terms of keeping us within the guardrails as far as the finances are concerned. And also want to thank Mr. Terrell. I know a lot of people have been, you know, Monday morning quarterbacking some of his decisions. I understand that it's pretty easy from the outside looking in. But I want to thank Mr. Terrell and I want to apologize to him for those that have outwardly and openly disrespected him. The way I was raised is, you know, in a public setting, you put a handle to people's name, you called them Mr. Terrell and not just Stewart, and, you know, as to demean the individual. So I apologize to you on behalf of the public and those that came forward to make those comments. I also want to thank Vice Chair Dudley for his time and his effort that he's put into taking a look at this budget. We've dissected this budget and we did not just throw a number against the wall. We approached this very prayerfully. We took a look at the expenses. We took a look at where the county has been in the past, where we are presently, and we took a look futuristically in terms of what we have going on. There are a lot of capital improvement projects in the works, some that, you know, and I was on the previous board we made commitment to. And I do not want to borrow money for the Moses Building. And if we reduce this rate, we're going to wind up borrowing money, which is a bad time to borrow money where the interest rates are. So I wanted to get that on the table. You know, behind the scenes, the public needs to understand, as I mentioned in Tuesday's meeting, we want our children to take advantage of this wonderful school system that we have here in Pennsylvania County. At the end of the day, when they graduate from high school and if they further their education, we certainly want them to be able to come back to this community and get a job and find work that is commensurate with, you know, their education. Having said that, the only way to do that is we have to attract industry into our community. And one of the things that I ran on was economic development. And, you know, I want us all to recognize that the Berry Hill Mega Park over there, we are on the cusp of having that payoff, if you will. But in order to attract the industry, we're going to have to, as a county, put together an incentive package to be able to get the industry into this area. So I wanted to make sure that we all understand exactly where we are. Now, I know Facebook, you know, they have their own narrative for whatever reason. I'm not there and I try to, you know, stay clear-eyed. And the reason I want to do that is the fact that these gentlemen up here, I salute and I applaud every one of these supervisors for their passion. But we're at a pivotal point right now in the county and we cannot afford to be a shrinking violet. We cannot shy away from doing what we believe is necessary. And I feel like that's why the public elected us to make the tough, difficult decisions. And I know it's a tough, difficult decision, but at the same time, I think, at the end of the day, going forward, we will be proud of the decision that we made. Our school system, they deserve funding. Our teachers deserve pay raises so that they can stay abreast with other localities, so that we can retain the best and the brightest teaching our children. Okay? Fire rescue EMS, I've said it repeatedly. This year, we invited them to the table. We've invited the sheriff to the table. We've also had conversations with the school system. So we don't want to cut the school system at all. We want to make sure they have the necessary tools to get the job done. Fire and rescue, I think we ought to support them. These gentlemen on this platform, that there were six vacancies, all of us ran for reelection. They committed during the campaign that they were going to support fire and rescue. If we roll this tax rate back to even fifty-four cents, we will have to definitely cut funding for fire and rescue. And I'm not real sure that we can give the school the money that we have committed to fund our school system. So I just want everyone to be aware of that. Okay? I've taken heat because I take the hard-line stance. And I've heard people say you got to have a spine and you got to have backbone. Having spine does not mean that you capitulate to the dissenting voices that are in the minority. Twenty people that came out to spoke, I applaud their passion. I also appreciate and I'm sensitive to the seniors, those that are living below the poverty line. But at the same time, we cannot be handicapped, hamstrung by those voices, which represents far less than one percent of the actual populace of Pennsylvania County. Now, having said that... Let me see if I can find it here. I'm going to make this motion. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make this motion approving the FY25 County Budget in the amount of $238,986,887 and a resolution 2024-04-1 as presented.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Tucker?
Second.
Second by Mr. Height. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a substitute motion, please.
All right.
I'd like to recommend a tax rate of fifty-two cents per hundred. And I'll give you the reasons if I have the opportunity to speak now.
Yes, sir.
You sure can. And I appreciate everything Mr. Tucker said about the work they put in. Ms. Vanderhyde, I appreciate everything that you've done. Mr. Terrell, I appreciate everything you've done. Mr. Hunt, finance team, absolutely yeoman's work. Most people don't understand how much goes into this, but it's a tough job and it's a lot of, a lot of learning curve, if you will, that we have to go through when we're dealing with folks that do this on a full-time basis. So we have to really spend a lot of time getting our head around this. The reason I'm recommending fifty-two cents, I'm sorry.
Can you pull that mic just a little bit closer?
Is that better? Let me move this out of the way.
Perfect.
Okay, good. So the reason I'm recommending this, and keeping in mind that $588,000 is equal to one cent of tax, that's a four-cent reduction from the fifty-six cents to fifty-two. And one of the things I would recommend, and it doesn't hurt anybody, the fire, the EMS, the public safety, the sheriff's department, or the school division, is removing one item off the capital projects list, and that's the Moses Building at this time. I think it's at $1.6 million. Is that right, Ms. Vanderhyde? That's in there? Is it 1.6?
1.5.
1.5. So 1.5 million that's in there. So we're looking at about three cents worth of tax there. And we can take that out without touching any of the other departments or without any of the other large divisions, such as the school, the sheriff, and the fire and EMS. And that being said, by doing that, we will be down to the fifty-three cents, fifty-three cent mark. We could take the Moses Building, we can actually take some money out of the fund balance. We can allocate that to the general fund and only use it when we need to use it. Because once we put it in there, the Moses Building is not going to be updated anytime soon. It's still in the planning process. And so we can reevaluate six months into this budget and find out how much money we have. And we may not have to touch that because as of today, I found out that we had some money come in. And Ms. Vanderhyde made this notice weeks ago that we have money unaccounted for. We don't know exactly how much is coming in, but a significant amount of money did come into the county. And she was very honest and upfront about that. And so I'm looking at somewhere six months, seven or eight months down the road, we will probably have some more funds come in that are not accounted for at this time. So I think we can do this without having to borrow anything from fund balance. But in order to balance the budget, we borrow, or we take the money from that, we just reallocate it. And I think you have to come forward, Mr. Terrell, to the board to make that motion or make that on the next meeting, I believe, in order to make that happen. But regardless of whether we do that or not, we can actually reduce that rate from fifty-six to fifty-three now, just by taking one capital project out. And anything else that we need to make up there, we can do it very simply. Looking at all the line items, we can take roughly, and I'm just putting it out there for numbers, we could take $200,000 out of the fire and EMS, $200,000 out of the school, and $200,000 out of the sheriff. And just to give you an idea, the sheriff's department has asked for $1.2 million extra funding this year. Volunteer fire department, $1.2 million. And for the schools, they are at $2.1 million extra funds. So $200,000 is not going to impact either one of those agencies right there, but it will bring the rate down to fifty-two cents. And in order to make this work, it means having time to spend with the finance office, with the county administrator, and monitoring this every, say, every quarter, and not wait 12 months from now and trying to put this, cobble together some finance report and tax rate at the end of 12 months. It means staying on top of this on a regular basis. And that's the reason I'm proposing the fifty-two cent. And I think that's all I want to say on it. So if there are any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those, but that would be my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. I'll entertain a second on that motion for the substitute.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for fifty-two cents.
All right, motion by, or second, motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Ingram. Is there any further discussion on this substitute motion?
From anyone? Is it still, since we're doing a substitute, are we taking that first?
No.
No kidding?
You have to vote on the first one first.
No, no, no.
No.
Let me explain what's going on on Robert's. You have an original motion and then you have a substitute motion.
That's right.
The substitute motion has been moved and seconded and you've had discussion. You have to dispose of the substitute motion first before, and if that passes, that's what occurs. If that fails, you go back to the original motion.
That's correct.
So if you're going to have more discussion, this is the appropriate time to do it. Before you vote on the substitute motion, I'll just ask Ms. McCluster to clearly state what you're voting on, so there's no confusion about what you're voting on. So we have to dispose of the substitute motion first before you get to the main motion.
Okay. All right, make sure we got it in order. Any further discussion on the substitute?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to say outwardly and openly, I'm not going to support that motion, the substitute motion. And here's why I'm not going to support it, is because the dialogue, we had a meeting on Tuesday. This was a settled issue in terms of where the majority stood. Now, when you come to this meeting and you propose reducing the rate down to fifty-two cents, okay, I am, I'm a little amazed because if we vote that substitute, to approve the substitute motion, there's no one on this DIAS that actually knows where those cuts are going to take place. We do not know exactly where those cuts are going to be taken from, what departments, that sort of thing. We don't know the exact dollar amount that we're going to sit here and try to figure out. And I appreciate, Mr. Bowman, you know, your set of numbers. And again, I appreciate your passion. At the exact same time, you know, I tend to trust our, you know, our county staff in terms of Ms. Vanderhyde has run the numbers. And basically, she has recommended, you know, the staff initially recommended fifty-nine cents. We were able to compromise, okay, at fifty-six cents. We gave Ms. Vanderhyde and also Mr. Terrell marching orders to go back, cut the budget, rebalance it. And I think you took 1.3 million out or somewhere in there. But at any rate, I really don't know what I'm voting on. And if someone can specifically tell me what exact cuts are going to be made, it sounds wonderful in theory, but are you prepared to tell me exactly where we're going to cut?
Ms. Tucker, I just did that.
Yes, sir.
I just, I just told you. You take the Moses Building out of there as a capital project. It's 1.5 million. That's over two cents worth of cuts there. That drops it from fifty-six to fifty-four. And then I just gave you a 200,000, just as, you know, a number from each one of the three large agencies, $200,000 reduction. And each one of them are getting over $2 million. large agencies, $200,000 reduction. And each one of them are getting over $2 million worth of new funding. And so, you take $600,000 out of that. So, you're three cents below that 56 cents right now. So, you're at 53 cents. And so, the remainder there, the one cent to be made up, can be made up. I don't even think we have to really look for the funds. I think it's going to be coming in during the year. Because all of those funds, those revenue streams have not hit into the county yet, but they are starting to come in. Am I right, Mr. Terrell?
I defer to Ms. Vander Heid. She watches, has the pulse on the financial cash flows.
Welcome, Ms. Vander Heid.
So, the budgets you have are estimates. As anything is, it is moving, right?
Yep.
So, it's always going to be money in, money out. I mean, until you know, that is the truth. We use the best information that we had at the time that budget started. That's why we were at a 59-cent rate. As we got, you know, past that, we had another month under our belt that we can review. That's how we got to 56. There's a lot that has to happen between now and final bills. In fact, even after bills go out, there'll be supplement bills, that kind of thing. Until the dust settles, you're really not going to know that. But the best information we have is what we've already provided you. Of course, there are over 200 hearings that are set for reassessment that still have to be heard.
That's correct.
So, you know, it's a lot of changes. So, it's not always money in. It's also money out. So, you know, you have to play both sides. So, the best information that we've given you is what we have to date. And that's all I can say about that.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Vander Heid. Yes, sir.
Very quickly, you know, the Moses Building itself. Now, you know, we as a board should never make a decision that will hamstring a future board. But the Moses Building has been voted on, approved, and I believe that that is in the works. So, you can't just willy-nilly pull it off the table and say, hey, I don't like it. And, you know, I'm not really carrying the sheriff's water and those people that work in that building, but the building is actually crumbling. And also, I think the HVA system is shot. No heat in the wintertime, not cool in the summertime. So, you know, folks, we can do better than that, okay, for all of our employees. So, therefore, I'm just not going to support that motion because I'm not real clear. I would want to take a look at exactly and specifically how those numbers are actually going to line up.
All right. Mr. Tucker, I appreciate that. But I'm not taking the building off of the table. All I'm doing is saying to fund this renovation, we just take the money out of the fund balance. We allocate it to the general fund when it's needed. That's all I'm saying, is the money is not, I mean, the building itself is not coming out of the project list. It's still there. It's just a matter of where the money comes from.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Any more comments from any of the board members?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Ingram.
It was that long because it was like we're talking about four days. And it was all that was worked. I had really looked at multiple comments, like my colleagues. And the range that I'm comfortable with was 50 to 50 times ten. But ironically, I just felt like 52 cents, which would be a 10-cent renovation, would be most beneficial to the people that we work for. And that issue I always keep in front of my mind. It's who exactly we would work for. And there's, I think we could have more time because I see where there's more things that could be done in the same line of budget process. It can be wonderful. Surely not what I'm saying. But certainly be where we could do a little bit better job, the budget and how we serve our people. So, that's why I second the motion for 52 cents. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. I would like to follow up. I've heard the comments on both sides. I've actually fixed 31 budgets and getting ready to vote on my third one. I know how the operations goes, what we have to support. I support our schools, our Fire and Rescue, our Sheriff. All of those people, all of those offices and departments are very, very important. But the 56 is going to really put a burden on the people that's really paying the bills. That is our citizens. Every one of us sitting in here at this board, and I know we don't make much, but our citizens pay us to set up here. Every person in this county, in the staff, school, and county office, our citizens pay for it. They the ones at the end of the day has to pay the bills. And really and truly, I have, I can't tell you how many conversations and how many phone calls I've had. But I can tell you, I hadn't had the first person to say, we need a 59-cent tax rate, or either you need to raise it some more. I've had a whole lot of conversations that we need to bring it down. We struggling. I mean, we looking at the highest reassessment that's ever happened in Pennsylvania County. I mean, we could back up four or five reassessment sessions. I'm talking 20 or 25 years. Add them all up, and it won't equal to this one. I mean, we looking at 30-some percent. 2018, we had a 6.3. And I can't remember about 2014, but it was probably that or less. So, my heart is for the citizens. That's where it's at. I understand everything that happens in the county budget. I had one. This would be a great year for people to start working together, helping each other, and keeping the costs down. I mean, I can remember back November the 15th, 2001, the Human Service Center was built and brought online. Well, I knew I needed some kind of way to work during the snow. I asked the management, could I get a truck and a salt sand spreader? You know what my sand spreader was that year? A five-gallon bucket and a pair of gloves. That's what I had to use. But that's just an example. We all can sacrifice a little bit. If we sacrifice a little bit, it will help our citizens a whole lot. But they going to have to sacrifice a whole lot if we don't sacrifice a little bit. I mean, they the ones that going to get hurt. County's going to run on. Schools going to run. Sky ain't going to fall on Chatham tomorrow after we vote tonight. Trust me. We going to get through it. We going to work together. We going to look after each other. That's what I'm really voting for. At the end of this meeting, we can meet again. We can decide where the money's coming from. If we need to take some out of fund balance, as Mr. Bowman said, this would be a good year to take it out because it would take so many load off our citizens that's out here struggling. I had a lady call me this morning, had a long conversation. Her and her mother was living together on their social security. She lost her mother. Now, she's going to depend on her check to pay all her bills. I can't get stuff like that out of my mind. And I understand, if you making a six-digit salary, you don't think the same way a person is making $10,000 or $12,000 a year or living on less than that. Listen, I've been at the bottom. I know where it is. I grew up on a toboggan farm, plow, and a mule. So, I know exactly where it is to start at nothing. And those people on my mind and in my heart, and that's who I'm going to vote for, is the people that pays the bills. And that's all I have. Thank you. Any more comments, remarks? Mr. Ingram?
Yes, sir. I did want to add one thing for what it's worth. I did not, I did not know that was going to be Mr. Bowman's motion. But in my mind, as I said earlier, I had a range of 50 to 55. So, 52 is right in there. But I picked Mr. Dalton because I like you. We both worked in our county over the last year. And they've done a lot wonderful things. And I don't want any of our employees to be dismayed by the perception that they're going to lose out on things that they need. But we can make sure that does. Because I do believe there'll be an additional revenue coming in, and things will be much better. We have to look at the great resource that which is our people. And once we get past offing the road, we'll look back and say, I'm glad we did what we did. So, I thank you for bearing with me. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Any further discussion? If not, we'll vote on the substitute motion.
All right. So, just to clarify.
Yes, ma'am.
The motion that you're getting ready to take a vote on right now is to approve the FY-25 county budget with a 52-cent tax rate, as Mr. Bowman made that substitute motion. That's going to be the vote at this time.
I haven't had anything to pop up.
It should be there. Mr. Ingram, can I get your vote verbally?
I'm voting yes for 52 cents.
Thank you.
All right. Motion fails. Three yes and four no.
Okay. Now, Mr. Chairman, we go back to the main motion. And Mrs. Clark, will you please read to the board what that main motion is, so everybody knows exactly what they're voting on. And that motion has been made and seconded.
Yes. That motion states, I make a motion approving the FY-25 county budget in the amount of $238,986,887 and resolution 2024-04-01 as presented. Let me change that in the system really quick. Hold on.
Need to get Mr. Ingram's.
Okay. Now, everybody go ahead and vote.
Ingram's.
Yes. Mr. Ingram, can I get your vote, please?
You were breaking up the motion. If you read it, send me, please.
Yes. That motion is what Mr. Tucker made?
Yes, I'm going to vote yes.
Say that one more time. Okay.
Since our 52-cent motion failed, I do support the 56-cent motion.
He said 56 cents. Everybody understood that the same, right?
He does support it.
Okay. So, your vote is yes.
I voted yes.
All right. Everybody else's vote looks correct on their screen, correct?
Didn't get it up. It didn't come up. I don't think it came.
He's green on the screen.
Okay, hold on. Mr. Whittle said he did not vote. All right. That was Mr. Tucker and a second by Mr. Height. All right. Try it one more time.
Okay.
Mr. Ingram, just to confirm, your vote is yes, going back to the original motion.
Yes, I voted yes.
Thank you.
All right. Motion passes. Five. Kaylin, just to be clear, because the technology gremlins got us, let's do a roll-call vote as well as a Belt and Suspender's approach. Let's call everybody in orally on the 56, yes or no.
Perfect. All right. Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Ingram?
Yes.
Mr. Bowman?
No.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Dalton?
No.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Five to two.
Yes. Now, Mr. Chairman, since we've approved the county budget, it's appropriate to go back and pick up the school budget at this point.
All right. We'll move back up to item 5A, to approve the FY-25 school board budget. Anything else to add to it, Mr. Terrell?
No, sir.
All right. Not hearing anything. I will entertain a motion for the approval of the school board budget.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion approving the county school FY-25 budget in the amount of $122,93,838 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Height, second by Mr. Dudley. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. We're ready to vote.
Mr. Ingram, can I get your vote verbally?
Yes.
Thank you.
She likes to hear herself talk, I guess.
All right. Motion for school board budget passes. Seven yes, zero no. Unanimous. All right. If it's no further discussion, any other matters? Yes, sir, Mr. Dudley?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Didn't speak earlier, but I just want our board that's here today and the folks that's here today, thank you for coming. Let's keep Mr. Ingram in our prayers, please. Put him on the prayer list at your church, please. And let's just lift him up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. I agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Not hearing any. Meeting's adjourned.